Call the November 12th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Jax.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Meele. Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Abbott. Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Morris is out of town, and Commissioner Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Automated announcements, please.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audiences left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Item five, need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th, 2020 meeting. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Martin and a second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ball. Motion passes. Item one.
Item one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 402-33137 from an A general zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for a recreational vehicle park in the Littlefield vicinity. We received one letter of concern from the public regarding this in favor of the development, but raising concern about access to a local swimming hole that may be impacted as part of the course of developing this RV park. Staff recommends approval with standard condition.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from NRV Resorts LLC? Please come forward and...
We were in contact with the Bureau of Land Management. They had a concern about people maybe bringing their razors or toys and going out to the land that way. And we did speak to Kendra there and let her know that we were putting a barrier up on that side so that people couldn't access that.
Okay.
And what we've noticed when we purchased the land was there's probably thirty or forty families a day that break onto that land and actually park there and go down to the river in that area. So we believe by putting a secure and, you know, very nice, quiet community there of recreational vehicles that it'll protect the area a little bit more than it is already.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from any or questions from any of the commissioners?
Sir, can I get your name?
It's Jack Galvin.
Thank you.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Now looking for a motion on item one.
I'll make a motion to approve our staff recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Abbott. A second by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commission. Item number two is an evaluation request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 402-64078 from an RE 10A residential recreation, ten acre minimum lot size zone to an RE 3A residential rec- three acre minimum lot size zone, bringing the property into compliance with the vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a representative from Teton Rock LLC available? I guess we don't. Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to speak on item two? No? Any questions or comments from commissioners? Looking for a motion on item two.
I make a motion that we approve item number two with staff recommendations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3A.
Item number 3A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan from an MR, medium-density residential land use designation, LR, low-density residential land use designation, and a PF, public facilities land use designation, to an LR, low-density residential land use designation, and PF, public facilities land use designation for Assessor's parcel number 402-17063 in the scenic vicinity. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a representative here, James Solville, on behalf of Mesquite AZ LLC? No? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on item 3A? No? Do we have any questions or comments by commissioners? Looking for a motion on item 3A.
I will make a motion to approve item 3A with staff recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Walker, looking for a second.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Martin. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to item 3B.
Item number 3B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 402-17063 from an RE 10A residential recreation, ten acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 8A agricultural residential, eight acre minimum lot size zone, AR 2A agricultural residential, two acre minimum lot size zone, and M2 general manufacturing zone to allow for a minor land division and wastewater treatment plant in the scenic vicinity. The applicant is seeking to split the property into five parcels. Staff recommends approval with standard condition.
Do we have a representative, James Stovall, on behalf of Mesquite AZ LLC? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item 3B? Any questions or comments by commissioners on item 3B?
I have a question, Scott. What's going on up that way? Is it getting ready to expose that, like, the rest of the county as far as growth? Or does anybody have a clue?
Chairman, Commissioner Meele, so this property received the public facilities and the rezoning for a wastewater treatment plant several years ago, but nothing came to fruition. They're looking now to split the parcel, but still want to do that in the nearish future. So that's why they're keeping that as part of the option. But that's as much as I know.
Mr. Chairman, I was up there a few days ago in that area. It's getting close to where you say, the way I talk to people and see, there's really a lot of business, a lot of building going on.
That you, as where they stop a thing about the stuff we've seen the last six months. There's a lot of activity up that way.
Yep.
Still to find out why.
There is. Okay, looking for a motion on item 3B.
I will make a motion to approve item 3B with staff recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Walker, looking for a second.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time of a special use permit on Assessor's parcel numbers 306, 31, 003J, and 003K to allow for a recreational vehicle park in an AR 3A agricultural residential, three acre minimum lot size zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay. Do we have Representative Keith Kamasha, H-K, here? Sir, you have any comments? Does the Commission have any questions for Mr. Kamasha? No questions, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would wish to speak on item four? Okay. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Looking for a motion on item four.
Chairman, I will make a motion to accept item 04 as per, as per board's, as per the planning and zoning recommendations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Meele, looking for a second.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking for item number five.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to BOS Resolution Number 2006-287 to remove condition number two regarding the realignment of the easement to ensure continuity of the existing roadway alignment satisfactory to the county engineer in the Golden Valley vicinity. So this item was approved, so back in 2006, to abandon the roadway easement. At the time, there were two model homes that were built within that roadway easement. The foundations are still there today. But, so the applicant is looking to finalize everything and didn't see a need to actually realign the roadway itself, and so they're seeking to finish off and finalize the abandonment of that roadway easement. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a representative here from KTH Consulting on behalf of Elliott Wave Trust?
Kathy's back there way.
Up, see Kathy there. Any comments, Kathy? Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for Kathy? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item five? Any questions or comments by commissioners on item five?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. For staff, are the slabs, are they going to be removed or are they just going to sit and crack down? Or does anybody know?
Chairman, Commissioner Meele, I don't know the answer to that question.
Good afternoon, Honorable Commissioner, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm not sure if those pads are going to be removed right away, but this came from, just as a point of interest, when Rhodes was out there developing, they literally built two houses right in the right-of-way. So they processed it in 2006 to abandon it so that they could keep the homes, and so now there's a new buyer to that property the last six or eight months, and it was brought up that that was never fully abandoned to this day. So it's just been sitting there. I have met with Public Works and Planning. No one has a problem with abandoning it. Public Works was happy to finalize it, but they couldn't because of that one condition, and there's no one who believes we need to realign that road. So...
It's just housekeeping.
It is, as far as we're concerned.
Okay, any other questions for Kathy, commissioners? Nope.
Thank you.
Hey, looking for a motion for item five?
I'll make a motion on item number five that we approve with staff recommendations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Walker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 6A.
Item number 6A is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 317-49102 from an A general zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for retail office buildings in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay. Do we have a representative, KTH Consulting, on behalf of the Double Diamond Ranch Incorporated? Any questions or comments for Kathy? Kathy, do you have any questions or comments for us? Okay. All right, anybody else in the auditorium that would wish to speak on item 6A? Any commissioner questions or comments at this time?
None.
Looking for a motion on item 6A.
Motion to approve per staff recommendations on item number 6A.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Martin and a second by Commissioner Walker, was it? Yep. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 6B.
Item number 6B is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 317-49102 to allow for a billboard and a C2H highway commercial zone in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay. Kathy, you wish to speak on this item?
I have to answer questions pretty straightforward.
Any comments or questions for Kathy on item 6B? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item 6B? Any questions or comments by commissioners? Looking for a motion on item 6B.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6B with staff recommendations.
Second motion.
Motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item seven.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 326-03086E to allow for two billboards and a C2H 3A highway commercial, three acre minimum lot size, and C2H 2A highway commercial, two acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions. However, I would note condition number three, since there will be two, that they will have to maintain the 500-foot spacing as required by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So the representative for item seven, Kathy, any questions or comments? No? Any questions or comments for Kathy? KTH? Anyone else in the auditorium wishing to speak on item seven? Any questions or comments by the commissioners on item seven? Looking for a motion for item seven.
I make a motion that we approve item number seven with the recommendations from the staff.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Meele. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to item eight.
Item eight is an evaluation of proposed additions to the Building Code Advisory Board functions and duties to align with the Building Code Advisory Board bylaws. Functions and duties were adopted by the Board of Supervisors, Resolution Number 97-2. The bylaws were amended and adopted on May 30th, 2013 by the Building Code. This item was heard by the Building Code Advisory Board at their last meeting. Ultimately, there is a functions and duties that was approved by the Board of Supervisors and a Building Code Advisory Board bylaws that were adopted by the Building Code Advisory Board. What this action aims to do is to bring those two into, basically to bring those two, to mirror each other, I guess. Currently, there are some, a couple of conflicts as far as when meetings will be held and where those meetings will be held. What this does is bring those two together so that they're saying the same thing.
Okay. Any comments or questions by commissioners on this item?
I have a question for staff. What is, I think, from what you said, it's kind of obvious, but I'm always interested in changes that make it more difficult for builders and people, subdividers, to do things. What is the opinion of the Advisory Board? I think you probably already answered it, but...
As far as, in general, on development?
On their opinion of the changes.
These changes were approved by the Building Code Advisory Board at their last meeting.
Were they the ones that made the recommendation of the changes?
Staff reviewed both the functions and duties and the bylaws and found that there were discrepancies between the two, for instance, and you'll have to forgive me, I'll probably get them wrong, but basically, one of them said that the Building Code Advisory Board would meet in January and June of every year on a certain date, where the bylaws, where the other one, I believe it was the bylaws, basically said they would meet at least once at the beginning of each year. And then one of the documents said that they would rotate their meetings between various locations, Kingman, Bullhead, and Lake Havasu, while the other was basically silent on that. So in a discussion at the last Building Code Advisory Board meeting, it was decided that those meetings, we would hold one annual meeting at the beginning of each year, and that that would be held here, or if needed, it could be relocated based on availability, and that would be determined by the Development Services Director. And basically, to get both of those, both the functions and duties and the bylaws, to say the same thing. So they were, the discrepancies were found by staff, presented to the Building Code Advisory Board, it was discussed, and they made the recommendations.
Seems like it doesn't have a lot of, anything to do with planning and zoning on building and the subdividing and things like that.
Ultimately, this is more how the meetings operate, basically the functions of how those meetings operate.
Thank you.
You bet.
I don't, I'm not good at reading the fine print. Appreciate your answers.
Mr. Chairman, and this has nothing to do with the discussion that we had at the last meeting regarding rules and regs from these same people?
That's correct. This would be a separate item. They both occurred at the same meeting, however, yeah, the separate items that were presented to them during their meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Nope. Looking for a motion for item eight.
I'll make a motion that the board approve item number eight. I don't think there is. Is there any staff recommendations?
Staff recommendation would be approval as well.
Okay. As the staff recommends.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second. Got a second by Commissioner Walker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, monthly reports. The monthly reports were sent to us via email, so we have those. Item nine, any commissioners' comments, limited announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, requests for reports from staff.
Chairman Jax, if I may, I would like to introduce Jeff Hawes here. He's with the County Attorney's Office. Unfortunately, we are seeing Mr. Taylor. He'll be leaving soon. He's retiring, I believe, around March of next year, so we're excited to have Jeff come on, and he'll be our new attorney representing the county during these meetings. Great attorney, and I'll let him introduce himself to you.
Okay.
Jeff Hawes, Jeff Hawes from the County Attorney's Office. Been here with County Attorney's Office almost five years now.
Been here with County Attorney's Office almost five years now. I grew up here in Kingman. I'm just happy to be back in my hometown.
Welcome aboard, Jeff. We're glad to have you. Thank you.
Do you know what you're getting into?
Yeah, this went good today.
Yeah. It's not always like this, so that's all right.
We promise to be kind.
All right. Item number 10 is called to the audience. Do we have anybody in the auditorium wishing to address the commissioners? Hearing none and seeing none, request for a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion second.
Commissioner Walker with the motion. Commissioner Gillette with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Carries and thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Alexander?